Good evening. My name is Vivian Spector. I am co-president of the Abington-Cheltenham-Jenkentown ACJ, League of Women Voters. We have helped facilitate these meetings for many years. It's one of the things that we do best. We are called on from many communities to help facilitate these. I moderated a school board forum last week at Hattborough-Horsham where they have a lot of issues. Every school board has issues. We thank you for being here and we look forward to your answers and I am sure that the audience wants to see and hear you speak. I'm going to give you the moderator who will give the rules and regulations and we'll read the questions. Dr. Curry Sautner is in the Philadelphia League and she is in the state league. So she is well qualified to handle this. Dr. Sautner.
I feel extra special tonight because I'm a doctor of education, not medical. So everybody stay up there, but this is a fantastic piece for me to be at and I'm really interested to hear what's going on. I'm going to be joined by my timekeeper and I'd like her to introduce herself as well. She's going to keep us all honest and on time.
Hi, my name's Anna Sappington. I'm a member of UPG's board.
Okay, so let's begin with the rules. Okay, I'm going to read through these, try to go quickly, but if you can't hear me or anybody in the audience needs clarification, please just let me know. So number one, each candidate will be given up to two minutes. There goes the mic in and out. It will give you two minutes to respond to the general introductory question. From there, you will be given the 10 random questions. You all have a question assignment. You are in alphabetical order, however, we'll be going in order of the questions. So be prepared, I will be calling your name at different times. The candidate for that, the candidate will be given up to one minute to answer his or her question, randomly selected question. After the candidate answers the question, each of the other candidates may also comment up to 30 seconds. It is at my discretion to allow the candidates to have a rebuttal of an additional 30 seconds only. This event will begin and has begun promptly at 7:00 PM. Seating of the candidates is in alphabetical order like stated prior. Prior, the moderator, let me just check if we don't need to read this one out loud. Okay, this is really important. As much as we love enthusiasm in these programs, we ask everybody to hold applause till the very end of the program. Cell phones filming or recording of the event will not be permitted and the audience will be asked to turn off their cell phones. Because everybody check your phone now and do that? Thank you. To ensure non-partisanship, the Cheltenham School District will be videoing this event for the UPG and will be able later post it on social media channels like YouTube. I will announce, we will announce the time allotted to answer each question and the timekeeper will hold up the cards to prompt you when your time is up. First she will get the 10 second and then time's up. And when time's up, let's stop talking. Again, we will begin with introductory question and then each candidate will separately answer the question he or she is picked at the discretion of the moderator. After the candidate answers his or her selected question, other candidates may give responses. Candidates might also choose to address this question in their closing statements. This process will be repeated for each of the 10 random questions. So basically you will be given a chance to answer your question and then each one of you will be able to have a rebuttal for 30 seconds. If I feel like it's appropriate, I may allow the person that was initially asked the question to do a quick 30-second rebuttal. Make sense? Great, thank you. After all candidates answer the pick questions, the audience questions will be submitted by index cards and will be asked by myself, the moderator. The audience questions will be screened for appropriateness, civility, and to avoid repetition. I will read the questions provided and use the ushers and screeners to support those questions. So if you don't have an index card now, it might be great to get one because you might think of a question during the program and not wait till the end. You'll be given 30, well, right now is the way it goes in this room, you'll be given one minute to answer the audience questions. If it changes, we will let you know that it's 30 seconds before we begin that section. In general, the first hour of debate will feature the candidates answering the prepared questions followed by 45 minutes of the audience questions. We'll end approximately at 8:47, giving each candidate will be given the opportunity to make a closing statement up to one minute and the debate will end right around 9:00 PM. Any questions before we get started? Okay, let's go. We'll begin with a general question. You have two minutes to answer the general question. We will go in alphabetical order. So Charles, we will begin with you for this. So your question, and there's a little caveat after the question, so I'll just warn you on that, that I'll keep speaking after I ask this question. What are your experiences and knowledge that you contribute to your qualifications and desire to serve as a school board director? To save time, please refrain from thanking your host or thanking the League of Women Voters. And please remember that in the Fall Voters Guide, everybody has biographical information about the candidates who respond, so be able to look at that during this piece. So I'll repeat the question for each of you before we go into it. What are your experiences and knowledge that contribute to your qualifications and desire to serve as a school board director?
Thank you. Hopefully I'm not too loud, I know these can be a little loud. So when I relocated here to Cheltenham with my family, I came for a very specific set of reasons. That was for diversity, closeness to the city, and high-quality, high-performance school district. I have not been let down since I arrived here. I believe all school districts have challenges and we're not, we're not special in that way. But what I bring to the table and what I could help this board and this community do, I bring a true connection to our children. I truly believe in the future that our children have for them and that quality education is where their greatest experiences began, where their sponge-like brains will absorb all of the amazing things that really help structure their more advanced learning once they get far along in life. In addition to that, I bring a strong operations background where I understand functioning in small and large team environments. I've done so for a variety of years from leadership capacities and have managed budgets accordingly. In addition to that, have worked with bargaining units and also understand the ins and outs of negotiations with bargaining units as well. So I think that puts me in a position to really understand one of the most important aspects of this district's work, which is the relationship that we have with our bargaining, our bargaining units or our teachers' union and other professional staff. In addition, what you'll see from me is a specific energy that I have to want to ask and answer any of the challenging questions that our district is really poised with, right? Some of them are surrounding equity, some of them are surrounding the achievement and access gap, some of them are around the very challenging aspect of being fiscally responsible. I'm very much so prepared to answer those questions and have done so and will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now Diana, what are your experiences and knowledge that contribute to your qualifications and desire to serve as a school board director?
To start with, I have been a mom for 30, 40 years and it's been a long time to have children in school. I also have grandbabies growing up. I see the problems that we have. I work closely with each of my children and I just think that it's time for a change.
Thank you. Okay, let me make sure I can see your name. Is it David?
Yes.
Great, so here's the question. What are your experiences and knowledge that contribute to your qualifications and desire to serve as a school board director?
Thank you. I've been on the board for four years and have a background in economic development and urban planning and policy and I bring that to the table, looking at a number of long-term issues for the school district, including facilities, long-term budgetary decisions, and also looking at ramifications in terms of, of course, education. Also ask hard questions and work well with the team in terms of looking at issues like equity and various disparate policies and looking at how decisions we make will work in the marketplace, the students and education, and also the township in terms of economic development. I have three children, including two children that went through the district K through 12, another daughter who's in 11th grade, so I have connections there with the school district as well. I've also been very active in the community in different ways. I'm on the Montgomery County Plan Commission Board and I've been involved in township economic development policies for years, including working as a volunteer for 12 years on the zoning code. So to summarize, I'm looking at some complex issues, long-term ramifications, and also looking broadly at how we get there and decisions that we make impacting the betterment of the school district today, including education, but also the long-term decisions that we make, how that will impact the school district and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan, okay, so what are your experiences and knowledge that contribute to your qualifications and desire to serve as a school board director?
Thank you for the question. So I currently serve as a behavioral scientist for a global manufacturing company and part of my journey to become a behavioral scientist is involved heavily with overall human behavior, but as well adult education, learning and development. Some of the tasks that I'm responsible for at present are leading task forces in the corporate environment to explore topics, most recently such as exploring the lived experiences of both men and women with an understanding of how best to create equity within the workplace. I bring a diverse perspective. I have global experience in that context of behavioral science, but also from a practical standpoint outside of academia. I have a PhD in organizational development, which I emphasize both from a scholar and practitioner standpoint, teaching adult learners that are pursuing their masters and/or PhD in the field, but also partner closely, again, the practice field within the corporate environment and the learning development space. I think these skills will add a diverse sort of perspective on how to solve some of the problems that are endemic to our district. I'm looking forward to the discussion and quite honestly, very impressed with the backgrounds of my colleagues here.
Thank you. Chris, what are your experiences and knowledge that contribute to your qualifications and desire to serve as a school board director?
Thank you. Well, I have two daughters in the high school right now. I have been a coach in the Cheltenham Little League and on the PTO board for Cedar Brook Middle School. My career skills and social experiences have brought me basically to this place and I'm a firm believer in the power of education and that knowledge is empowering. I was the first person in my family to graduate with a bachelor's degree in psychology, which I try to utilize on a daily basis to help me understand diversity. First career experience that I believe makes me a good candidate is, was my first job, which is working for an international human resources consulting firm called Towers Perrin. Through various management positions, I learned to account for all stakeholders to a process, which I think is extremely important. As an implementation manager, I learned how to bring these different stakeholders together to create actionable plans, implement new solutions, and resolve issues. And of course, always ask to do this on time, on budget, and with minimal resources. Prior to coming to Cheltenham, I was elected and served two years on the school board in my former township in New Jersey. It's there I learned that you can't fully identify the impact of our decisions on our children by strictly looking at test scores and budgets, although that's some of the data that you need to analyze to be able to understand. Lastly, as a health insurance broker, I currently use all of my skills and experiences in a consultative manner and educational approach to help people understand and select the best plans for themselves. And that's how I try to utilize my skills and I think those skills would greatly benefit me in being a school board director. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joel, what are your experiences and knowledge that contribute to your qualifications and desire to serve as a school board director?
Thank you for the question. I'm completing my fourth year of service on the school board and I bring to that service passion for the work. I'm committed to the, all of the things that we're doing to improve education for our students. We are working diligently to infuse equity in everything we do. It's been a priority of the administration and the administration has had the full support of the board in executing on that. We also find ourselves in need of developing curriculum in many of our areas and the board has supported the administration's focus on curriculum development. Personally, I'm an attorney. I've been practicing attorney for 30 years. My experience includes contract negotiations, employment work on both sides, so I understand the challenges that we face in our relations with the teachers and the way they're managed. I've been on the negotiating committee for both the non-professional staff union negotiations and I'm in my second stint of negotiating with the professional teachers' union. And we recognize in all of our work for the district that we have the need to do the best in funding our efforts while at the same time recognizing that our tax base can't handle significant increases in taxes. And I'm proud to say, if you look at the recent history of this board, we have kept our tax increases to a minimum while doing our very best to provide what is needed in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Myron, the question, what are your experiences and knowledge that contribute to your qualifications and desire to serve as a school board director?
Thank you. My name is Myron Goldman and much of what I would say, like these other folks, you can find at cheltenhamgop.org. I'm going to use my time, my two minutes, to take on a very serious problem I'm very concerned about in this district. If you take a look at the last PSSA math test scores, between 40 and 60% of our students scored below proficient. I thought about that as a retired math teacher and I've come to the conclusion that our problem lies to some degree in instructional models that we're using. The instructional model that we generally use is not necessarily consistent with what we know about behavioral psychology. For example, some of you may know about Angela Duckworth's work. She graduated from Penn, received a Genius Award, and she did some research and discovered that the one characteristic that's most significant with successful people is grit. And she wrote a book by that title. But grit is really perseverance. And here's the key point, what makes somebody persevere? It's having a goal. Without goals, there's no perseverance. We also know something else about goals. The closer one is to actually achieving the goal, the higher the motivation to do so. Now let's take a look at a typical classroom. Student A walks in and this student has a goal of high grades. Those are the kids who do very well in our school system. Now we take a student who comes into the classroom without a goal. Why is that person here? What is he going to do, he or she going to be doing? And this is where we get avoidance behavior, where we get passive-aggressive behavior. This largely can explain some of the behaviors that we're getting and it relates to the equity issue and the achievement gap.
I'm going to have to cut y'all. Thank you though.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Julie, so the question, what are your experiences and knowledge that contribute to your qualifications and desire to serve as a school board director?
Thank you for that question. So I'm currently serving my second term on the school board, which means I've been serving for, this is my eighth year. And I believe my knowledge is both a lawyer and my experience as being on the board for the last eight years really does help tremendously as we continue this work. I joined the board eight years ago and I've served in the capacity currently as president for the last two years and vice president for two years prior to that. Well, during my duration. So why is that important? I think in serving as co-chair of the Educational Affairs, the liaison group, the policy committee, and the legislative committee has given me a perspective from a board governance perspective, from a policy development perspective, from a fiscal perspective, that lends, I think, credence to some of the issues and concerns that we are, we are trying to address as a school board. I've combined that knowledge with really sincere and deep desire and goal to make sure that, ensure that all of our students, each and every one of them, really gets a quality education in our school district. Before joining the board, as a parent in the school district, as a mother in the school district of three children, all of whom graduated Cheltenham High School, I was also an advocate. And I was an advocate for all children. And I was an advocate with respect to closing the achievement gap and providing opportunities. And I think in that capacity, from that spectrum, really spawned my interest in even serving on the school board. And I'm hoping that as we continue working together, as we develop curriculum to address some of the concerns that Mr. Goldman had indicated, as we develop policy, as we really look at equity in our school district, that we really make meaningful changes that will really affect who the stakeholders are, which are our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Phyllis, what are your experiences and knowledge that contribute to your qualifications and desire to serve as a school board director?
Qualifications are, I made it this old. I mean, I thought getting old would take longer, but it didn't. And I'm probably more qualified than anybody here. I have the least amount of formal education. But I'm always willing to learn. I sang in the Philadelphia Opera Company for a couple of years. When you sing in an opera, you have to learn how to get along with everyone, the conductor, the people, and everyone. I represented all the unions at different times. I've written a musical that was performed off-Broadway. And I've always said, every man is my master and that I'm willing to learn from him. I hope Mae West didn't say that. Somebody else said that. Anyway, I am willing to learn and I've got to learn to be part of this and I would like to try. Thank you.
Thank you. Tyrone, what are your experiences and knowledge that contribute to your qualifications and desire to serve as a school board director?
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start with my desire because I heard a lot of my colleagues here talk about their qualifications. My desire hit me to do this literally like a cold bucket of water. It was 1996 and I was in my college dorm and my roommate threw a cold bucket of water on me to wake me up. Because my education at Cheltenham, I'm a graduate of Cheltenham High, prepared me so well for college that I didn't even study. I was sleeping, I read books on my own for my own enjoyment, but I didn't study and he was offended by that. And I recognized how important and how powerful education could be then, because my professor started pulling me out of class to do other projects, started introducing me to people so I had internships or an opportunities before some of my classmates did. I recognized then that what I wanted to do with my life was ensure that other people had the ability to get the education that I did. When I left college with a bachelor's in business and then my master's in business, I decided to take a different route to my parents who were both teachers, they wanted me to make money. And I went into social work first. I worked mostly with truant kids and convinced them that their education was more important than hanging out on the corner. After that, I took over a community center, did the same thing with kids who would cut school and taught them how education could change their lives. Since then, I now work for organizations that sole purpose is to ensure that every child in the state of Pennsylvania gets a high-quality education specifically before third grade, knowing that third grade reading skill, literacy proficiency will actually be a determinant for high school graduation. I truly believe that without education, you are doomed. And I believe that if I can add a piece of my knowledge and my information to this board to try to help people understand how important education is, that I'm truly doing a service for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move to individual questions. You will have one minute to answer your questions, so remember, just one minute to answer your questions, and then each person has 30 seconds if they choose to rebuttal. We're going to begin with Ryan. Ready? What, Ryan, what do you believe is Cheltenham's largest obstacle to providing a quality education to all of our students and how do you propose to resolve it?
Thank you for the question. As I'm reflecting on the responses or the introductions of my colleagues up here, you know, it's clear to me that we can all agree that the obstacles are multidimensional, there's no single issue here. But where I guess I gravitate toward in terms of identifying the specific challenges that we face, I tend to gravitate toward the work of Carol Dweck around moving from a fixed mindset to a growth mindset. A lot of the work that I do, and I'm going to share this with you and tie it in, is working with adult learners, for example, on role modeling, on the power of narrative-based leadership, the effect of creating a blueprint for individuals to really reach at the heart of their audiences. I think that's missing from, and I'll draw another linkage, to curriculum in the district. I think we tend to gravitate towards some of the instructional models of the 20th century and we really need to emphasize a shift toward self-awareness, cultural awareness, all the things that come with a 21st skill set that we need to improve on.
Thank you. Myron?
Yeah, I need to continue with my last answer. When I left off what to do with the students who don't have goals, it sounded like I was dismissing them, quite the opposite. In response to what needs to be done to improve the quality of education, these students need to have a very specific goal when they come into that class period.
I don't think that's in accordance with the rule. That is not a rebuttal.
Well, I think I'm answering the question, the obstacles to a quality education. One of the obstacles would be having an appropriate instructional model. That's my point.
Got it. Done.
Could we get a clarification of the rules on that again? If it's directed to me as a question and I answer it, where do we go from there?
It has to stay on topic, on point.
I'm sorry, can we add in a 30 seconds?
You each get 30 seconds. So would you like to go next, Julie?
Sure, thank you.
Sure. And again, on that topic.
On the topic.
No, she's on. Oh, Myron.
Oh, this is on. Thank you very much. So I think I heard Mr. Cox talk about having a curriculum in place and I think that just for the audience to really understand, the board has charged the administration with putting in a robust curriculum that is culturally relevant, that is standards-based, that is based on PA core standards. That is critically important for us to have in place initially and we are vehemently, not vehemently, we are aggressively working towards that goal. So I want to make sure that the audience understood that as well. Thank you.
Am I allowed to respond to that?
Do we allow back and forth rebuttals or no? Go ahead, Ryan.
Okay, so I appreciate the discussion. Part of the reason why I mentioned curriculum... Part of the reason why I mentioned curriculum with emphasis on 21st century skill set is that according to the strategic plan that was authored a couple of years ago outlining the plan from 2016 to 2021, there was that emphasis on 21st century skill sets. But just today, we heard from current board member Joel, who had mentioned that part of the challenge was the need for developing curriculum. So maybe something that we're working on, but I think we need clarity on what is the emphasis going to be on? What are those skills that you feel are necessary for the 21st century?
Joel?
Thank you for recognizing that the administration is indeed keeping cultural relevance, 21st century skills in top of mind while this curriculum is being developed. We have, we had a deficit in improving our curriculum. We are working on that deficit and it's infused with 21st century skills, just like Dr. Cox is suggesting. That's the work of this board. That's the work of this administration. We're supporting it.
Thank you. David?
Thank you. Something else which the board's been working actively on to support the administration is project-based learning and having that being done formally at different grades, but also informally infused into different grades throughout the K through 12 model. And understanding that people learn differently, that a lot of the way that people work in our society is collaboratively on identifying and solving problems and not working in the real world on the traditional model of being given questions and answering them directly. So that's another aspect we're working on. Thank you.
Any other panelists? Great. Okay, we'll move on to number two. Charles, number two is yours to begin with. There has been some conversation about our districts having an overrepresentation of students receiving special education services. How would you propose to work with administration to study this issue and implement solutions without reducing or taking away services from students who actually need them?
Sure. Thank you for the question. First, this work starts with collaboration and it also starts with empathy and compassion. Where the administration currently is, is understanding the details of their student population, like who are our students and how can we help them the best? I propose that when we work with administration on complex issues such as how we determine a child is in need or not in need of special education services, it requires that we have appropriate policies that are equitable and that can be applied across the board at every school from every individual who is performing the evaluation. So what are we looking for there? We're looking for consistency and quality of the evaluations. And quality is what we know we can expect out of our school district. And I would continue this work and look for ways to better collaborate with subject matter experts, not just looking internally with our administration, but continue to look at neighboring communities and see how we can collaborate with them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebutts? Great. Okay, now we're moving on to Tyrone. Your number three. What steps would you take to ensure that each and every student has equitable access to the broad range of academic and extracurricular activities, extracurricular opportunities provided by the school district and the tools necessary to succeed academically, socially, and emotionally?
So since we only have one minute, I'm gonna tackle this in two quick chunks. The first is let people know what all the activities are. One of the scariest things I found when I was campaigning is that families didn't understand the services that the district had. I got a very angry question from one parent. What is challenging? How come I never knew about it when my kid was in elementary school? That's a problem that our families don't know. The second piece is simply looking at data. We know right now that there's an achievement gap because we can look at the number of children by demographic information and see who's achieving how. We can look at the same thing by who's participating in our after-school activities, who's receiving extra help. We can look at cultural competencies as well. There's a great amount of information that is actually held in numbers. And I don't know that we do the best job, although we're starting to, of actually looking at those numbers in that way.
Thank you.
Can I address that?
Sure. I see Joel and then Julie. Does that work?
I have three children. I didn't get to say this in my introduction. One graduated in 2014, one is a senior graduating this year. And I am thrilled to be able to say that in the challenge and the honors and AP courses, when my son graduated in 2014, minorities were drastically underrepresented. And that has changed dramatically in the four years since, those four years that I happen to have served on the board, because we are infusing equity in everything we do.
You can go for a rebuttal for that one and then we'll go to Julie.
And I'd actually, I appreciate that and I'd actually also mention that I think one of the other great things that's happening is there is more emphasis on communication so folks know what's happening in the schools and the programs that are there as well. And I was also the first African-American male in honors. So I appreciate the fact that there are more people of color actually in that program.
Thank you. Julie?
So I also just wanted to clarify that we've been looking at disaggregated data for quite some time. Even before I got on the board 11 years ago, many administrations prior to that, we were looking at disaggregated data at all levels, splicing and dicing it. It was both GPAs, it was benchmark assessments, it was discipline data, it was honors and AP penetration, it was GPA, it was PSSA, it was SAT, et cetera. That information is really, really important. We're gonna be actually doing that next month at our ed affairs meeting here, so come on.
Thank you.
I wanted to say more, but that's okay.
Would anybody else like to rebuttal? Nope? Okay, then we're moving on. David. So question number four. There's a service disparity as it relates to the test scores between certain demographics in terms of the test scores, such as between African-Americans and white students. What can the board do to address this issue?
Thank you. As Joel mentioned before, the school district's been working actively on equity issues in terms of implementation and we're working also towards development of a very clear policy about that, that we should reinforce it and working on that very diligently. Also, we've been working, expanding reference on cultural proficiency of teachers, understand equity in terms of race and also gender equity. There's also a problem in the school district that we're addressing in terms of the disconnect and disproportionality representation for gifted students, being overly represented for white students, and conversely, with IEP students being heavily overweighted, overrepresented by minority students. And we're working to address those aspects as well. Lastly, there are a number of mentorship programs, support programs that are being implemented now that happened to be implemented, that we're expanding, modifying, improving to address students that have those needs, to help improve test scores and bring the students up to where they should be and where they can be with their potential. Thank you.
Thank you. Myron?
Thank you. Well, I'm gonna come back to what I said. In education, we often deal with the inputs, but we miss the key point. If the way we're delivering it is inappropriate, then what you're offering is not going to be helpful. We've been dealing with the achievement gap for a number of years, but we have to realize we've got to look at the method we're using in instruction if we're gonna make real progress in meeting the needs of these kids.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we will move on. Diana?
I'm sorry.
Would you like to rebuttal?
No, just a point of clarification. Am I allowed to ask questions or just a rebuttal as a statement?
We're gonna try to stay focused on rebuttal of the statement that was asked. So stay on point of the question that I'm asking. So Myron, you're looping around there at the end, but if you could get a little bit more direct to it in your 30 seconds, that would be great. Thank you. Diana, you ready? Here's your question. Administration has provided professional learning for teachers and staff around cultural proficiency over the past few years. What are your thoughts on how to ensure that our teachers and staff are able to meet the needs of students from a wide variety of cultures, backgrounds, and identities?
I believe that students are no different than you and me. They want to learn. Teachers are supposed to be teaching. I feel that they should be taught just like our students. They need to have report cards, they need to have people check up on them. There's no way to guarantee that everyone is doing what they're supposed to. So we kind of have to take some of that for what it's worth. I don't know how to say it. But I do believe that teachers need to be accountable. They, it's their job to teach. It's not always just a student's problem. I think teachers need to address it as well.
Thank you. Myron, rebuttal. Thank you.
I'll be on topic. You know, we have a lot of professional development time with the consultants and the staff, but maybe we ought to include staff development time with the kids and hear what the kids have to say about how and when they feel respected, disrespected, when they feel valued, what their experiences are in their classrooms. So let's bring the kids into the discussion. They can tell us partially what the problem is.
You know, I'd also like to add, this topic is particularly important for me. One of the gaps that I see, especially as I referenced earlier in the corporate world and the job market, if you will, is individuals that are not prepared, you know, with the skills that are needed for the jobs and demand today. I find this topic to be a particularly relevant one for my skill set and experiences in the OD world to come in and lend that perspective to what we should be teaching our teachers, what we could be teaching our teachers on this topic to prepare the workforce for tomorrow.
Julie?
I think, while I appreciate everyone's answers, I do think that we are starting cultural proficiency training of all of our staff and administration. I know Mr. Goldman also talked about some training of our students, or at least listening to our students. I think that's critically important as well. But I offer up to the board, the current board and the next board coming in, that we also look at cultural proficiency training for the board. I think we need to have a common platform and vocabulary as we're addressing these issues so that we're really clear in what we're trying to address.
Thank you.
If I can?
Sure.
I think it's important for the audience and the voters to understand the board's role with respect to the way teacher training is done. It is, it is not, we are not the professionals. The administration is the professionals. They are, it is our job to hire the superintendent, set the budget, create the policy so that the professionals do what they do best. And if they're not doing it well, we need to check them, but it's not our job to set policy about teacher training.
I agree with that statement, but I do also want to point out for the voters that it wouldn't hurt to have folks elected to the board that do have some foundry with respect to my colleagues in these areas so that while you may not be the ultimate decision-maker on them, you can lend perspective as to why there might be some breakages in the system.
Because he went twice. I will let you go twice if you want to go.
No.
Great. Okay, just making sure. Chris?
Yes, I agree with almost every single statement that occurred. The one statement that I would just actually say is that I say stakeholders because every single group needs to be included. And I also include, students need to understand what teachers are going through as well. So I mean, there's, there's, both culturally, both cultures need to understand the other one. So that's, that's important as well.
Go ahead, Julie.
A very short comment. I agree with Mr. Fishbein. While the board does not set what cultural proficiency training is done, we do have a role in supporting that. And we have supported the administration in their efforts to ensure that all staff, including bus drivers, including support staff, including administrative staff, are trained on cultural proficiency. I think that's critically important.
Anyone else? Okay, we're good. Okay, number six. Myron. How do you view student discipline through the lens of social-emotional learning as a norm and expectation for the district?
Boy, a lot of constructs in there.
I know.
First, I wish I had the time to go into more detail about what I was referring to, but just let me say, an inappropriate instructional model has implications for discipline. And if anyone wants details of what I'm talking about, I'll be happy to do so. As far as rules, I believe in very few rules, but I believe in a culture that talks and permeates the values of respect and consideration for others. That pretty much takes care of much of the specific rules. If there is an infraction that's unintentional, then restorative practices make sense. In the cases of students who are intentionally defiant or insubordinate, first I'd want to make sure there is not a medical or psychological issue that needs to be addressed. If there is not, then I think we have to look at expulsion. Nobody, a transfer to an appropriate school, no one has the right to disrupt the education of the others.
Joel?
I'm extremely proud of a program we began last year called Youth Court. And I would take strong issue with Mr. Goldman's statement that restorative justice doesn't work with intentional misconduct. It's absolutely not true that that's the case. Youth Court is designed to make sure that the students are involved in the administration of justice and that the students who have committed infractions understand their consequences of their actions.
Thank you. Julie?
I'm sorry to keep talking, but I think...
That's what we're here for.
In terms of the policy development, in terms of the role of the board, we did look at our discipline policy two years ago. And we really revised that policy based on the fact that we saw a lot of disproportionality in terms of how students of color were being disciplined and other students were being disciplined. And so we really looked very carefully at that policy. We looked at the proportionality of the infraction with the consequence. And we really spent a lot of time, and we have a grid, and if you're interested, it's Policy 218.
Thank you. Tyrone?
Just very quickly, I kind of want to piggyback on what Julie just said. Knowing that the Department of Education has actually put out policy statements and recommendations around expulsion and expulsion, and especially knowing that it's disproportionately applied to children of color, I think that we were very careful about using that as a tool. Also, I see us as people whose job it is to make sure that all of our children are educated. So going back to social-emotional health, we need to figure out the root of the cause and work with that before we talk about expulsion. Thank you.
Thank you.
And tied into Tyrone's comments is the school districts work diligently on improving social support systems and services and counselors for students that do have emotional or learning needs that impact their education ability and also their behavioral issues. And that's an underlying issue that we have an opportunity and also a need to address.
Everybody good? Okay. Thank you. Phyllis? Here we go. How would you, as a school board director, collaborate with parents and guardians and the greater community to foster a healthier, safer, and more positive learning environment for our students and teachers?
First thing I would do is change these microphones. We live in a very strange environment. There's no respect. The police are not respected, teachers are not respected, the schools are not respected. So we have to work on that. We have to bring back some of the beauty that we remember growing up when there was more respect. My husband and I go to three nursing homes a week. I think that they should try to get some of the elders to come in maybe once a month, one hour a month, and give them some of their expertise. There are people who have so much to give and I'm sure they would want to do that. And I think if they worked with that and if they brought in the students who are achieving to help with the students who are not achieving, it would be good for both groups. Thank you.
Thank you. Myron?
A couple of things. One, we could have town hall meetings in venues in the community outside of the school district itself. Secondly, we need a policy that defines how parental concerns are responded to. I hear too frequently that parents contact and are not receiving our responses.
You know, I also think we should be exploring the expansion of our partnerships already existing today, such as the UPG, United Parent Group, looking at the African-American, Sheltonham African-American Committee, as well as some other options there for different perspectives. You know, exploring those partnerships and expanding them, I think is a logical measure for building a necessary coalition.
Great. Joel, your question is next. What could you personally and as a school board director do to raise the level of parent involvement and community engagement in all of our seven schools?
I'm proud to say that when elected to the school board, this was one of my highest priorities and we have executed on that. We have a communications committee that has set the agenda for communicating with all of our stakeholders, taxpayers, students, parents. And if you are paying attention to the news media, our, the coverage of our school district has changed dramatically in that time. In addition, we are using social media and all kinds of other media to communicate our positive messages and also to communicate about what is important for the community to know about. to know about our work. If you look, we are now getting executive summaries on all of our committee meetings so that people don't need to be here in this building to know what happened. And all of that has a profound impact on the engagement of everyone who needs to be engaged.
Thank you. David, do you want to go? And then we'll go to you, Julie.
Thank you. The board's also been working as part of communications on when parents register new students, for improving communication with those parents. It's a gateway into our school district and improving communications in terms of opportunities, expectations, and programs and services that we provide, and that's something which is being developed and being improved upon.
Julie?
I just wanted to also mention that UPG has been working with the school district directly to really look at creative ways to bring new parents in and to partner with them. I think one of the things that we could also do as a board, which we have not thought about doing yet, is actually as new families join our community, the board should have a welcome letter to each of those new families, reach out to them personally and ask them what are their needs. And I think we don't need to look at whether they're attending so many meetings, but what can we bring to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Julie, this is your question, number nine. The economic downturn has had a considerable impact on our public schools. Declining revenues have led to the program cuts and a major concern in dealing with the financial realities and decline in the local real estate values and state revenues. With all this, school board members have an important role to play in positioning our district for a stronger future. What do you see as the district's strategic priorities?
Thank you for that question, because we're right now in budget season process. So we've already started that process to really look at our strategic priorities. I think the board collectively has really asked the administration to really make sure that we maintain the rigor of our academic programs while still being fiscally responsible. So what does that really mean? That means reducing our expenses, really looking at strategic ways long-term that we can make sure that our budget stays, you know, within line, both with our index as well as with our needs. We're also looking at ways of finding deficiencies. And some of those include through a facilities audit, our LED light bulb replacement process. While they may seem to be small savings, they're huge savings over time. So we struggle with trying to balance our budget, but we do know that we've asked the administration also not to look into our fund balance as a way to pay recurring debts.
Thank you. Phyllis, would you like to rebuttal?
Yes, I think it needs transparency. The budget should be down to the penny so that everyone knows where the spending is, why there's not enough money. You need transparency.
Myron?
The word "ask" was used several times. An "ask" is a request. What I would do is I would have the board think about what it wants in this next 2021 budget, pass a resolution instructing the superintendent to provide a budget within those parameters by the May meeting of the Fiscal Affairs Committee. Secondly, again, I would give the su-- can I finish?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's time we start getting some measurable goals on achievement. And I would give the superintendent a--
Time's up.
Can I just finish the sentence?
No.
You know, I'm going to pair with Myron.
I'm sorry. I did give three extra seconds because of the--
Chair moved.
--distraction. Sorry, Jessica.
So that mean I can't or can't?
No. He already had three extra.
Okay, oh, all right. Thank you.
Chris? You ready? Money matters in education. Oh, I'm sorry, Ryan. Go ahead.
I was going to pair with Myron very briefly and just state that, you know, I think voters are concerned, because as we started the conversation tonight, we pointed out the fact that grades one through eight right now, if you look at the PSSA performance, it's forty to sixty percent of students are not at proficiency levels. And when we start talking about budget, it's a very sensitive topic, because if you look at the budget and you see that we're spending more than we have, the question then in the voters' minds is what are we having place or what's going to be in place to really do things smartly, specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and timely?
Thank you.
In terms of the comment that was made about the budget process being transparent, we are working on improving the budget process in terms of communications, but the meetings are public, they're open to the community, and frankly, they're very sparsely attended. I know that tends to be a very dry subject, tedious to many people, but I encourage people, including tonight, to show up to public meetings, including budget meetings, ask questions, become informed, versus the alternative, which is sitting at home and/or complaining about when you're not happy about the tax rates or the budgetary structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now on to you, Chris.
I would like to emphasize that it is, it is a defect in the way we fund public education in Pennsylvania, that we are constrained to tax our citizens more than they can be taxed because we don't get sufficient funding from the state government. That's a problem. That's a problem that is exacerbated by this community's lack of a business tax base, so the burden falls on homeowners. That is something we are saddled with. We're aware of it, and we are trying to do our best.
Thank you. Okay, Chris?
Since he just answered question number ten.
We're still going to give it to you. You can take your time and wrap around it. So, Chris, money matters in education. Clearly, we've heard this so far. And children attending well-resourced schools perform better on achievement tests. However, Pennsylvania's current education budget still falls far short of what is needed to adequately fund our schools and ranks forty-sixth in the nation for its share of education funding. How will you communicate the needs of the public schools to other levels of government to advocate for stronger public schools?
Hire Joel to be my marketing liaison. But basically, Julie hit on it, you know, there's a, there's a need to balance the budget, okay, with what we do have as far as resources. So we're looking into that already. Joel hit on it as far as communication, because it can't just be me knocking on our state senators' doors and/or our state representatives' doors. It's going to take UPG, it's going to take the legal women voters to be behind us when we go and say, hey, we're forty-sixth in the nation, and that's unacceptable. So, but I will be right on the front line, knocking on the doors, but I will ask every single one of you to be behind me in some way, shape, or form, whether it's a petition, whether it is to physically be behind me when we go to the steps of Harrisburg. But yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Charles?
To the point of having the backing and the supporting of our community, our parent groups, and others when we're having conversations with our local commissioners, with our state representatives, our senators as well, as board members, we are charged with that energy. I don't want to use power, but we're charged with that power. And it's our role to communicate in that way, and we can communicate via the relationships that we have, even with the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, who provides a very complex--
Thank you. Okay, no, 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 just showing it around evenly. Okay, Julie, I think you're next.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that it's not kind of speculative. I mean, I think that as the liaison to the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, every month I actually provide a summary to the community as part of our legislative meeting. Now, again, those meetings are sparsely attended, but that information is shared. I also, along with other board members from other surrounding school districts, also advocate in Harrisburg. We have an advocacy day. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Tyrone's next, and I'll jump back to you.
Well, I'll be quick, because I was going to mention some of the things that both Charles and Julie said, is that it requires not just our community locally, but partnering with other communities, so we get other state senators, other state reps, because the entire, the entirety of our State House has to vote on the budget. So we need to make sure that it's not just our community, but that we're partnering with the whole state.
Thank you.
This board has made its voice known by way of resolution as well. It's, we have taken a formal vote to resolve to get funding done more equitably and intelligently.
Thank you. David?
Thank you. And recently, I got a platform amendment adopted at the School Board Association statewide to advocate, have the School Board Association advocate, to change the policy for school busing to private schools, which is a major cost driver for the school district and also other school districts as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're moving on to audience questions.
Do we have time to give them a minute each, or you want to keep it to thirty seconds?
I think a minute each is appropriate. Does everybody agree? I feel like you can't get a thought out in thirty seconds. I'm hoping they're really good audience, okay? A minute each, okay. The relationship, so this is a, I'm sorry, just to confirm, general question for everybody, and then everybody has a minute to respond? Does each person get the one question?
Not everybody has to respond.
Got it. We'll just try to be in some kind of semblance of an order. The relationship between our teachers and the board and administration seems somewhat tenuous. Which affects affect partnerships? What's your view of the relationship, and how do you propose to improve it? Who would like to take that one?
I could take that question. My mother's a teacher. I grew up in a household where I heard at the dinner table some of the perspectives, mostly the tense perspectives related to one teacher's experiences. And I think it comes down to understanding lived experiences, which is a term that's thrown out a lot. I think conversations need to happen between these different stakeholders, I'll use that term, and then action coming from that. I think the administration and the many stakeholders involved have a lot of bias of what they think are the issues, but really quite simply haven't had conversations in an unbiased and a collaborative way. I think I lent a perspective to that, and I would bring that to the school board, and I hope to do so.
Thank you.
We have, in the past three years, developed something called the Curriculum Instruction Professional Development Committee, which is a committee made up of teachers and administrators. That is an important, a critical vehicle to enhance the kind of collaboration and improve that relationship, which is, conceivably, is at times strained. And we've seen results.
I want to let others talk. I just want to point out that, for me, it's an intimate relationship that has to occur in this type of communication. I use the term "lived experiences." Lived experiences are not explored effectively, in my experience, using terms like committee. I think those things become too formalized and bias becomes too pervasive.
Got it? Okay. Next question. How would you address the rise in some of our talented students' learning, CSD, after middle school instead of attending CHS?
Leaving.
Leaving, sorry, leaving. Students leaving CSD, let me begin from, start from the beginning. How would you address the rise in some of our talented students leaving CSD after middle school instead of attending CHS? Due to the high-performance public schools?
Due to the high school's public perception.
Sorry, due to the high school's public perception. Handwriting. David?
One thing I've advocated for as a school board member is that we do exit surveys of parents and possibly students to find out why parents decide to leave the district, either physically moving out of the district and/or taking their students into private schools or homeschooling them. And it's something I'll continue to suggest is done in terms of understanding the reasons why.
Thank you. Tyra? Charles, sorry.
Some of what was mentioned earlier regarding the creation of the communications committee and the work that's currently being done to continue to share all of the great things that are going on in every one of our school buildings, so that we're writing our own narrative, also doing our work and leading the drive to want to create a more inclusive learning environment from the kindergarten experience. So what we do in that communications committee should sound a lot like us wanting to bring everyone together, so we're sharing experiences along the way, so that a high-achieving student's experience mirrors that experience of all of the other students that that child is in school with from K through eight, and then from eight, sorry, and then from nine until twelve.
Myron?
That's a great idea, David. And frankly, the way to make it happen is for the board to actually pass a resolution. Resolutions are binding, otherwise they're requests. Also, having orientation for the, do I have time? Orientation for the students leaving Cedar Brook coming onto the high school. Cheltenham High School is a great high school for many kids, but it's, for some other children, it's not. And so I keep coming back. All these other problems we're talking about are related to having appropriate instructional models. And I could be more specific, but I don't have the time. But I will tell you, when we have models that are appropriate to our children, they're all going to, well, many of them are going to succeed, and while we're a high-achieving school for some, will become a school of success for all.
Julie?
I just wanted to comment that as a board member, our responsibility is to each and every student who walks through our doors. It's both a high-achieving student, it's the middle-achieving student, it's a struggling student, and we do have that responsibility. I, like David, would definitely support having those exit interviews. I think it's critically important to understand why anyone is leaving our school district, wherever they are, when they are, you know, whether in Cedar Brook or the high school or the elementary school. But one thing that was really beautiful that I saw on our website just yesterday, we inducted sixty-one students into our National Honor Society. And if you look at that picture, that picture was really representative of our entire student body. The diversity of that picture was not what I've seen in the past before. It was absolutely beautiful, because we are really doing a lot right. And so I would really be interested to find out, as people are leaving, what they thought we needed to do differently or better. Thank you.
Joel?
Sorry I've taken every question, but I feel pretty passionately about this one. The idea that people are leaving for private school because they think that there are deficiencies at the high school because of what they read in, what they used to read in the newspaper, or what they see in test scores, is entirely flawed. Our high school offers more AP classes than almost any in the region. It has every sport you could want to play. It has an excellent music and arts program. If parents are leaving between Cedar Brook and high school, it's because they don't know what we have to offer, and it's because they are being influenced wrongly by test scores, which are an average. But when you look at our top-achieving students, I would put them against any school anywhere.
Chris?
Well, considering I have a daughter that actually left the district after Cedar Brook and is now back in the district, she left for ninth grade. It was more of a cultural thing. She couldn't seem to, at least in what I understood, fit in, or there might have been some cliques and she couldn't sort of feel the social aspect of school. But going to another charter school and then realizing that she actually was falling behind academically, I understand what everybody is saying here that Cheltenham is a great school district, okay? But there are some gaps, and there are some things that we all still need to work on, which is why I think there are ten people right here that are sitting in front of you because they want to make things even more better, if there is such a terminology. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great. Next question, I'll try to redo it a little bit more coherent now. While the current board has shown great interest on parental input and has shown support to strategies that favor parental engagement, the current administration has room for improvement in this area. What would you propose to hold administration accountable and transparent regarding parental input and help increase engagement?
Well, the one area which I've commented on, if we need a policy that stipulates that when a parent contacts either a teacher or administration within a certain fixed period, say two business days, there is a response, that requires a policy that it will happen. As far as the rest of the question, I don't have anything more to say.
Thank you. Julie?
And yes, I'd like to probably, I know I can't ask the person to ask the question, but I think we have provided several opportunities where we have really solicited parent input. It has happened both on the hiring side of different staff. It has happened in our climate, culture, and equity meetings, when we are really, you know, talking very seriously about what does it mean to have an equitable school environment. We also have that with our, most recently with our calendar committee. So we did solicit through three sessions with the community and with parents in particular about giving us their opinion about when school should start. I'm sure we could do more. We could always do more. And I'd like to hear, you know, maybe some suggestions that come from the person who asked that question. But we have really solicited parental input on key issues that I think have been important to the community.
Okay. This one's going to be a little near and dear to my heart. I did not write the question, but just so you know, my day job is at the National Constitution Center, so I'm really listening to your answers on this one. So I love whoever wrote this. "Sheltonham High School does not currently require any civics or US government of its students. Would you support a change to require a mandatory civics or US government class to earn a diploma?" Go for it, Julie.
Go for it, because legislatively, there has been a law that was passed. In fact, for 2020, we are required, as a school district, to offer civics. I think it's critically important to do that. I'm part of the Advancing Civics Education Program through the Philadelphia Bar Association, where I'm part of a team of lawyers who teaches civics at Roxborough High School every month. And it's been, I see one of my, the wife of one of our colleagues that's on that committee. It's been a fabulous experience, but civics really is about how do you engage? How do you engage, and how do you know that you have the authority and the ability and the responsibility to make a difference? So I'm thrilled that the legislature adopted that.
Joel? Oh, sorry.
We are, we have never wavered in our desire to have civics. There is US government infused through the K to 12 program, and it's been a priority of this administration with the support and encouragement of the board to do that even more creatively. The superintendent is engaging in a partnership with the president of Arcadia University to have that civics education focus intentionally on social justice, which is such an important part of civics education, especially in the environment we find ourselves in. And we are incredibly committed to that work.
You know, I'd also add...
Sorry, I was going to let Charles go next.
Thank you. This is a topic that is also very near and dear to my heart. Had an opportunity to speak at one of our legislative board meetings last year, prior to my board service. And I recognize that, as, you know, as a millennial, one of the disconnects that I have in my friend group is that, you know, we had a focus on government in the school that I attended, and I had no idea, I have no idea how it would be possible to learn about how to progress the thoughts and the energy behind someone's opinion on a particular topic into potentially being heard as a policy that could be introduced into law, if I did not have that government background, that civics-government background. So as a board member, certainly supporting and continuing to ensure that we have a government-social justice-civics curriculum is absolutely important for the future, stands the requirement from the governor. I absolutely want to see that happen here in Sheltonham.
Ryan?
This is a particularly important topic for me as well, and I hope for the voters, as evidence of my commitment to this topic especially, I decided in my current job to scrap the curriculum on one of our leadership development courses entirely, redesign it, including an immersion tour of the Constitution Center over the last six months, where we actually got to explore, as I referenced earlier, this idea of narrative-based needed leadership, where through the lived experiences of some of our past leaders, going back to the inception of our country, we were able to really kind of extrapolate meaning for our day-to-day lives and how we can work better together.
Phyllis?
Answer that question is yes.
Theron?
So I just want to take a different stance on this. Obviously, I'm very happy that civics is required statewide, not just here in Sheltonham. But one of the things I think has also been really great is that, even in our elementary schools, when we talk about our climate and culture, we've been infusing pieces that actually help children see themselves as part of the community, and see themselves as people who can direct that community. So although it's not formal civics even at that age, it kind of plants the seed, so as children get older and they move to their formal courses, they have an understanding of what it means to be part of a community, and what it means to lead your community.
Thank you. David?
And if I can follow up on that point, I'd like to see the civics education also talk about and address engaged citizenry, being engaged in civics versus being purely academic exercise, both through the actual classwork itself and through other programs the school district offers and provides and encourages. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next question.
And since almost everybody else got to talk, I figured I'm just going to agree with everybody, because it is very important. I would love to see Arcadia more involved in our school district, and if they would be able to do some type of work that wouldn't increase the budget, that would be even better. So thank you very much.
Thank you. "Do you feel any responsibility to the hard-working Sheltonham residents, whose medium household income is around $75,000 a year, while almost every administrator and over half of our teachers make six-figure salaries? How do you remedy this?" Julie?
A typical question, but I think that there's no one on the board that does not look at our budget and say, "How can we reduce taxes for our community?" We know that there's a wide breadth of incomes in our community, and we don't lose sight of that. I think we do take our adoption of our budget very seriously. The board, you know, has really instructed the administration to look at creative ways of reducing our expenses while retaining our academic programming. And again, we have, we're not looking at using our fund balance for any recurring debt, or... So we really are taking a serious look at that. So I want anyone and everyone in our community to know that we do take that very seriously.
Myron?
The board actually controls the district when it passes resolutions. When it asks admini... And I don't mean this in a negative way, but when it asks administration to do something, that's a request. The school district needs to actually pass a resolution that they've thought through, setting the parameters for the next budget. That will then give the administration the opportunity to do what they need to do to come in with such a budget. We certainly have to control our expenditures. For the last three years, they've been about $3 million over our revenues. That can't continue, and every member of this board is well-aware, and I don't need to think about that or draw on agreement on that. But if we're going to bring the budget into play, the school district has to pass resolutions, which gives the administration specific direction. As far as salary... Okay.
Ten seconds. You have ten seconds, sure? David?
Thank you. In terms of salaries, the district and administration and the school board's been working to look at the salary structures for both the teachers' contract and also for administrators, and trying to realign them with the marketplace and the ability of the school district to pay, and has been focusing on that aspect as well. One of the underlying issues, not as an excuse, but there's a marketplace for administrators and teachers that the district has to be in, and we have to be cognizant of that, along with our ability to actually pay the teachers and administrators fairly, but also strongly recognize the budgetary limitations and the burden on taxpayers of this district. And we're doing a better job looking at those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next question. "Do you think that discipline should be a part of the school district's duties, responsibilities? If so, how would you assess the district's performance in this area?"
I'll take that first. We have metrics on this, and the metrics are getting better. So we're doing a good job. We had a major incident three years ago that got a lot of publicity, and I think got in the heads of a lot of community members, that this school is out of control. I've had kids in that school all of that time. It isn't out of control. There are more fights than we can, than we wish, there are more fights than we wish to tolerate, and actually, the restorative justice, the behavioral interventions that we have implemented, have, we've seen numbers that show that that's working. So I'm proud to say that we're addressing that issue in a way that's constructive and effective.
Thank you. Myron?
Certainly is the responsibility of the school district to help develop kids who are respectful and considerate of others. That is a function of the district. I'll come back to my pet peeve, it's the one thing I want to get across tonight. I hope that the district will take a serious look at what instructions is used in classrooms, because it impacts discipline. And kids who are succeeding in class are not going to be discipline problems.
Anybody else? Got it. Okay, next question. "Much of the work needed to address issues in our district must be done within the homes of our students. What is your vision for addressing barriers to equity that exist outside of our school walls?"
So I don't have a full plan formulated right now, but what I, first thing I'll say is that, one of the first things that the district has to do is look to reach families in other... We always get the most involved families to come speak to us. If you look on the audience, it's the most involved people that are here. If you go to the board meetings, it's the same three or four people at the meetings. We have to find ways to reach out to find the needs of those families who are less involved, and that's the beginning of the step. We can't necessarily change everyone's home condition, but we can find out what we can do to be more supportive, what we can do to understand the homes the children come from, and then support them better in the classrooms.
Myron?
Great idea. And a few years ago, when the town hall was held over at Enon Baptist Church, it was extremely helpful. I thought there would be a number of these on a regular basis, but it just died. I would urge the district to consider having regular meetings out in the community, where people feel much more comfortable about coming and expressing themselves, and what their problems are, and what they're thinking, than they do. Believe it or not, if you're not an educator, school builders can be extremely intimidating. So a good idea, I wish the district would have those meetings out in the community.
We recognize that there are parents who have had bad experience in schools as children, who are much less likely to engage as the parents of children, who are having problems, who need an advocate. And one of the ways that we're reaching out to them with the help of UPG is a buddy system when they're coming into the district, so that there is an awareness that there are people available to those who might not otherwise engage, to ensure that they have the most opportunity and the greatest comfort level in order to be able to engage in that involvement in their students' education.
Thank you. Chris?
If you will, I think, at least from my perspective, I look at it as like a small task force of stakeholders that can help try to bring in each one of their groups, so to speak, and look over their groups to try to identify areas where we can actually reach out to people without intruding on their privacy. I also think that the township could be of help when new people move into the township. So I think we should also be, I think, once somebody mentioned it earlier, maybe even communicating when people move into the township. One of the associations that I don't know if it's, we're utilizing yet, but the relatively new alumni association for Sheltonham, I think definitely should be brought in, because I know that that has some good people that can communicate out to the communities for us.
Thank you. Okay. Next question. "What do you think are the most prominent assets of CSD and the township at large that you think could be the strength to build upon to continue growing and make any necessary improvements?" Myron?
Sheltonham has one of the best statements on equity I have ever read. Now all we have to do is make it work. So it comes off the page. There's no action plan with it, there are no measurable goals with it, but it states the problem clearly, and it commits the district to doing what's necessary for each child. And you know my next sentence, so I don't have to say it.
David?
In terms of the township, and the school district does work with the township, I'm chair of the liaison group that works with the township, we meet monthly, is, the township has great location proximity to Philadelphia, downtown Philadelphia, has a great diverse housing stock, and has diversity and a lot of green space. And those are things we should try to build upon as a broader community, and also tie that into the school district. Thank you.
Thanks.
I think also we have an opportunity with Arcadia being right in our backyard. That's a treasured, valued resource that we are actually looking to partner with, to do a lot of really great things within our school district, some of which are making sure that we have a pipeline of interested students who want to go into education, identifying that pipeline of, in particular, students of color, who really are not represented in, and particularly male students of color, who are not represented in our teaching population. The gifts and the values that we have really are the children that you send us every day. That's really what we pride ourselves on. They make us proud every day. We have to do our job. We have to make sure that we are looking at them as the prized treasures, which they really are.
Joel?
This car magnet is what we, the district and community developed this four, five years ago. It says, "Historic, Green, Diverse, Creative, Progressive." These are our characteristics. This is what we sell. This is why we are an attractive place to be, and this is why people should want to move here to take advantage of all that we have to offer. And the communications piece of this, the one, the reason that we need to do a better job of telling our story instead of letting it be told, is because when people really understand this, and that we have this diverse, progressive community that wants to solve the problems that we see nationally, we have the opportunity to do it here in a really unique way.
Thank you.
To piggyback on some of the points that were already shared, and just to provide a new one as well, one of the most amazing aspects of this community that I've learned of, of the last seven years that I've been living here, is that everything that I saw on paper is true. I haven't been let down by the quality of the school systems. I haven't been let down by my neighbors or community members, and just about everyone who I've met, who I know, who lives in this community, I met them because they were the parent of a child who attended school with my, with my own children. So I came here with complete unbiased opinions about any past histories or transgressions that have challenged the district, and learned for myself. And I think that when people begin to go down that pathway and begin to learn for themselves, they will too begin to understand the things that really are strong and prevalent, are important in this community. They resonate amongst all of our citizens and everyone here.
Okay. Next question. Correct? Okay. "Do you feel that the board should set specific goals for the superintendent? What would be the consequences for failure to meet the goals?" Myron?
That's number one. That's frankly, the school board's primary function. If it doesn't pass a resolution, then it's just a suggestion. The superintendent must have well-thought-out goals which are specific and measurable. For example, I'm very concerned about starting to show some progress. So on the last PSSA exam, between 40 and 60% of the student population was below proficient. I would pass a goal to the superintendent that in the following year, at least 50% of the students who scored basic would score at least the proficient level in the current year's exam. That's a very specific goal. I'm not going to tell the superintendent how to do it, but if it doesn't happen, we'd better know why.
So just to share with the community, every year, we are charged and we are responsible as a school board to actually pass board goals for the superintendent. Not for him, but with him. And this year is no different than any other year in the past. The superintendent's goals from last year are already posted on our website. We are in the process of working on collaboratively with Dr. Marseille, his goals for 1920. And when we get those, you know, finished and approved by the board, those will also be posted. They are, as they have been, SMART goals, Myron, that we've had in the past, and we will continue having those in the future. we will continue having those in the future. The consequences of not meeting goals is basically the superintendent gets evaluated on those measures at the end of the school year. Um, and then we have discussions about those going into the next school year. Um, so I don't, I want everybody to leave here knowing that we do set goals for the superintendent every, thank you.
Ryan.
You know, the voters here are hearing a lot about what's been done, what we're looking to do. I think a lot simpler in, in terms of the pattern of what we're talking about here. As a voter, when you're going into the booth, you're going to make your decision, you may already have, you may have already made your decision, but take stock of the, the conversation tonight, the number of years having been on this board for some individuals, the tenure involved, the accomplishments, and just ask yourself one question. Am I confident that my kids today are better off than they were a couple of years ago? Or should I try something different? That's what I'm really thinking about here, no matter how, what complexity we talk about or what we have in place or what bumper stickers we have that are minted. Are we getting better? Or do we need new perspectives on this board? Quite simple.
I'm sorry, do we segue to closing statements?
No, we are not doing closing statements, so I, I hear your point totally, well taken. Do you want to join in the, yep. Um, are we staying on point and on focus, people? I know it's getting late, let's stay focused. Charles?
Thank you.
And we're going to stay with, I'm sorry, I just wanted to stay with one comment to get to the next question, because there is a pile.
To Julie's point and also to Ryan's point, what are we doing differently? So yes, uh, our superintendent is evaluated with a set of SMART goals every year that we develop collaboratively with him. In addition to that, what we're doing differently is, is really approaching the way, um, that we provide feedback and, uh, that we provide commentary on the execution of those goals. And so what we're doing right now is utilizing a, a new tool, um, that's going to give us an opportunity to be better at evaluating the superintendent. And, uh, one of the things I really want to discuss with our board is, uh, some of the goals that we set for ourselves. Um, I know that some of the things that make us very happy, um, again, that's very emotionally driven, uh, but what are the successes that we look forward to ourselves? Um, what are the things that as a board, uh, we should hold ourselves responsible, responsible for as well? And how can we communicate that to the superintendent through his goals? And then also in all of that work, obviously help our children as well.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next question, because you did get a, a comment on this one. Anybody else that has not? Got it? Okay. The question, general question. Where is room for trauma or other, and other causations of poor behavior in expulsion policies? Second part of the question is, how do you, how do you protect against implicit bias in this policy? Joel?
One of our reactions to the outcry that came after the fight three years ago was that we did actually hire more counselors and use the services of a counseling service, um, through contract so that we could get to the psychological root, help the students who are having those behaviors that may be based on trauma to deal with their issues so that they don't manifest in bad behavior. And frankly, because we are seeing fewer cases of discipline, it seems that it's working. Is time up? Was that, oh, okay. And, and the, the student services department is fully aware of trauma infused practices and is incorporating it into the program for students who are struggling.
Ryan?
I think the focus in education, as much as it is in business, and I'll make this comparison, is around crisis management in the moment. So I think there's a, a good job, uh, having been done to address the issues as they unfold, but I think the board moving forward should really emphasize sustainability and not just the behavioral modification, but how do we make this, uh, education culture, um, more sustainable so that we can, you know, start avoiding some of these crises before they happen?
If I can, the, the positive behavioral and PBIS, I, I don't know the acronym, and mindfulness were things that we had been doing before we recognized any crises. We recognize that those are, um, ways of dealing with the problem that take time. You won't see results through PBIS or mindfulness tomorrow or next year. If our students maintain those interventions throughout their school careers, we will certainly see differences as they progress through school.
You can have a 30 second rebuttal on then.
And for further clarification, I also draw a linkage to my earlier comments around having someone or, or several people on the board that are familiar, uh, to a greater extent with some of the literature available on mindfulness, so that when there are recommendations that come in, I understand a comment earlier was that it's not the school board's role to be making the decisions on these things, and I'm not suggesting that, but having a voice, being familiar with the literature and understanding to what extent it can be effective, I think would be valuable for you, the voters, to consider.
Go for it.
So I could speak firsthand, uh, to the work that the district has done to implement mindfulness techniques, uh, within their school buildings. Uh, my son is a, currently a fourth grader at Glen Side Elementary School, extremely talented, extremely, uh, intelligent young man. I'm not saying that just because he's my son, um, but I'm saying it because he's my son. Actually, I'm sitting here because of him. Um, but what I really want to share is that, um, there were some challenges, uh, with the way that he handled difficult situations and challenges, um, with many of his schoolmates. Um, but the school really took a very hard look at what they could do to really help him. And from a building perspective, their implementation of PBIS was very helpful and it was, it was wholly beneficial. Uh, but what I can say also is that the mindfulness techniques that were introduced, uh, my son and his friends have also shared those same techniques with his friends as a moment to reinforce the things that he learned in school, and he's going to continue to do that, and so will the other students, uh, in our school district.
Julie?
And I just wanted to state, and this will take probably less than 10 seconds, but I think, um, uh, Mr. Cox, some of the things that we put in place like PBIS, like mindfulness, are systemic changes. They aren't reactionary, they aren't just the flavor of the day, because we're dealing with a lot of students who are coming into our school district with trauma, and I think we recognize that. So having to put the additional counselors in place, um, contracting for services, having PBIS implemented and sustained are systemic ways that we're addressing these issues, not in a reactionary way.
Thank you. Um, we're going to keep moving, because we've had a couple back and forth. Tyrone? Oh, nope, sorry. Okay. Okay, going to move to the next. Given that research overwhelmingly supports that high schools should not start before 8:30 a.m., will you support a change in the start time for CHS to 8:30 or later?
Absolutely. When I, when I heard schools start at 7:35, I thought they were kidding. Yeah, this is insane. Of course, the, the times need to be made much more reasonable. Now, there were complications with that in terms of scheduling with other schools and whatever, so it'd be helpful if it were done by all the schools that are in the same leagues and so on. But, uh, from a, from the point of view of, to the degree it can be done, absolutely, schools are starting much too early.
David?
I also very strongly support it. As Mr. Goldman said, there are some logistical and process issues that are being looked at by the administration, but something I very strongly support.
Charles?
I too support that initiative. Again, some of my own experiences, starting my first class at 7:53 when I was back in high school, I remember that time in my head and it's ingrained in me, but I remember that the four minutes prior to that were like the most difficult minutes of my life, trying to get, get everything together and make it to class on time. Um, and given the complexity of the lives that our students have now, um, I think it's very important, and in addition to the, uh, the, the transportation that we, the transportation system that we provide here with busing, I think it's important for us to continue to evaluate those, uh, those earlier start times, and I, I definitely support that.
Joel, Chris?
I just wanted to say my daughters wholeheartedly support this initiative, especially the one that will still be here after the end of this year, so.
I support it as well. We have been involved in a consortium of schools that have been studying the issue for the last two or three years, and we are fortunate now, I wish we were a leader, but at least now we will be able to benefit from the experience of the schools that have done it in the region. And, um, there's an initiative at a state level to study it, and all of this should result in everyone, including us, changing start times.
Julie, go ahead.
Um, I also support the earlier start times. I have a daughter who's now, later start times, not earlier, sorry. I have a daughter, um, who, we live right across from the high school, who I have to admit, she was late every single day, because I think we lived across the street from the high school, and she felt that she could just dash across the street. And there has been a consortium studying this. In fact, there was a report that was issued by the Pennsylvania Department of Education about a week and a half ago that really talked about the benefits of earlier start times for later start times, excuse me, don't post earlier, later start time for students. And, um, there's a lot of data out there that really does support that from both a, um, psychological standpoint and a energy standpoint and a performance standpoint. I do think that as a board, we'd have to be very responsible and really looking at, um, really the logistics of that. For those school districts who have started a later start time, um, they really did have to look at buses and other, um, other considerations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next question. Do you support age appropriate, comprehensive sexual education for our students, beginning at the elementary level and continuing through the high school level? And if you do not, please explain why.
Yes. I do.
I do as well.
Can you please explain why?
Friends who have said that the children come home and say, uh, my teacher said that I should consider what sex I want to be. And they were very upset at that. And I think that's upsetting.
Anyone else?
Uh, yes, I do agree.
Got it.
Yes, I do agree as well, and it's for the simple reason that, uh, the more educated you are on some of these issues at an early, early enough age, uh, I think it smoothes out the path that it's sure to be ahead.
Got it. Phyllis, do you want?
Instead of sex education, why don't they teach how to get along with another person? They don't, they don't have a, a course on that. I would think that's more important than sex education.
I support sex education, age appropriate from, at all grade levels.
Anyone else? Okay, to the next. Do you know where our schools rank academically in Montgomery County? Second part of the question. Do you know where we rank from a property tax perspective?
Yeah. Unfortunately, uh, we're not as high up as we'd like to be on the PSSAs, especially in math. We have a real problem in math PSSAs, uh, and we are up near the very top in terms of taxes, there's no doubt about that. I guess that's the answer to the question.
Thank you. Anyone? David?
Yes, I'm certainly well aware and well versed in that. It's something which the board is cognizant of in full and individually, collectively, and something that we're working to address. Um, they're complex issues, not making excuses. Um, on the tax side, something I work on in many different ways, inside and outside of being a board member. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles?
Uh, yes, uh, again, do understand our position in both of those perspectives, uh, recognizing that the, the value of a mill in Sheldonham is a little bit less than some of our neighboring communities, and, uh, given the significant challenges that we have to, uh, again, uh, balancing, uh, our revenues between that of residential and commercial, um, present some challenges for us. Uh, but in terms of how we, we use that energy and, and how we take that to our board work, uh, is a constant. Um, again, how do you do, how do you build a great curriculum without, without paying? Um, that's a question that we ask ourselves every day when we come and do this work.
I, I'd like to address that. On the tax side, I talked a little bit earlier about the fact that we don't have a business tax base, and this board, and David Cohen alluded to it, but I would like to expand on it. Um, this board, it works with the township to ensure that we expand business opportunities. That's important work. It's really not a core function of this board, but we work on it because we recognize that in order to maintain tax levels for residents, we need more business taxes. On the score side, on the performance side, I would, I would suggest that there is an achievement gap that exists in this country as a whole. Our community is more diverse than most, and because there's a endemic achievement gap and we have more minorities, that makes our average lower. It's something we're working on intentionally.
Okay. Look, I've been, uh, there were board members on here being concerned about this achievement gap for years, even longer than I have. I've been concerned about this for decades as well. It's time we start showing some results. And when I tell you the, these 40 to 60%, that's the total school population. If I tell you about the group they call, um, the historically low achievers, it gets down as low as 20% efficient, proficient. This is nuts. Let's start facing up to a problem, and I'll go back to what I said. The district has to look at what they're doing in the classroom. If the classroom instructional model doesn't work, all the other problems are going to continue year after year.
I just want to be clear, the board is not content with the achievement gap. Uh, we were very concerned about the achievement gap. We're also concerned about the opportunity gap. And so I don't want anyone at this table to think that the board is not focusing on that on a regular basis and insisting that we actually do better. We have to do better, um, because each one of those data points is a student who walks through our door, and we've got 4,600 students who walk through our door every day. So that is critically important to us. Our tax base, we know that we need to look at our budget. We know that we have really, um, made clear to the administration that we have to reduce overall expenditures. Um, we have looked at ways that we can do that. For example, we were looking at a bond issue that would saved us $1.9 million. The timing of that is not quite clear yet, but that's something that we're looking at as well.
Okay, this is the last formal question. There's a lot of talk at the table of the PSSAs. What do you think about the idea of teaching to the test issue?
Okay, you go first. So I'll be sure, because I didn't have a lot to say, Ryan, Myron. Um, so there is a problem with teaching to the test. One of the things that I've always advocated for, and it's going to take a long time before you completely get there, and it's starting somewhere with a project approach that we've been implementing, is looking at more authentic assessments. Um, and that has to be a statewide issue. For those who aren't aware, authentic assessment refers to the fact that we can understand what you've actually learned versus what you repeat back in a test. All right, so for most of us, something that we've authentically learned might be the skill of walking. We don't have to think about it, we mastered it, we know it in three in the morning if we wake up. However, for most of our, um, most of our standardized tests, kids are, are, are good at studying, getting that, that grade that they need, but not necessarily mastering the skill. So it's, 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 that's more systemic than we can solve right now, but that's one of the issues that we have, I think, as a statewide, uh, education system.
Aaron?
Look, we have a number of students scoring at the advanced level. However, um, there are a couple of things that we'll bring about the, the lower scores. For one thing, that's for form of the question, um, even the multiple choice questions will have an extra sentence in there to throw the question off. And if the student doesn't know how to read those questions, and, because if you look at some of the answers, you went, how could they possibly pick that, that answer? So giving the kids experience with the types of questions, multiple choice, and what is looked for in the long answer question, teaching to the test, my goodness gracious, the AP class teaches to the AP test. I don't know what teaching to the test means. I know the topics that are going to be on the PSSA, and I want the kids to learn those topics. And if they learn the topics and they learn how to respond to the questions, they're going to score well. There's no need to have the high number of students scoring below proficient. It's embarrassing, and it's time that we actually start showing results. Uh, we know we're all concerned about it.
Anybody else? Okay, here we go for the last. Oh, sorry. Nope, you're all right? Okay. So, um, last piece of this is, let me find it exactly where it is. make a closing statement up to one minute, and then we're cutting you off. Charles, you're going to go first. We'll go around the table.
This is the part where I'm going to thank the League of Women Voters and UPG for providing us with the opportunity to come and speak to the community. You know, my, my name doesn't, you know, doesn't say much about what work I want to do in the school district, and the fact that I'm willing to collaborate and have difficult conversations with everyone at this table and with everyone in our community is just the beginning of, of the reason that I really want to embark on this board work. But the root of, of my energy behind wanting to be on the board is the fact that I've seen what, having, when, I've seen what it looks like to have children who have strong advocates behind them. And those advocates can very well be the trusted advisors of our teachers and administrators, as well as our community board, community members, and they should absolutely be on this board, and that is what I expect to bring.
Thank you. Dan?
I believe everybody has to have consequences for their actions or their inactions, whether it be a student, a teacher, or the administrator. I think we need to see the consequences that happen when our jobs are not performed correctly. Our children are our future. They're the future of the country. The only thing that matters is their well-being and their education. I think as a school board, it is up to us to make sure that the children get everything that they're entitled to.
David?
And I want to thank the League and also UPG and also the citizenry for showing up tonight. I'm on the board not just to improve education, which of course is a key stone and cornerstone in the school district, but also, again, to look at a lot of the operational policy issues and long-term planning issues for the district around facilities, around budget, around operations, in a positive way, not micromanaging, but collaborating with the district administration, my fellow board members, to look at things which can really lead to a better-run school district with better outcomes for the students, but also operationally, which then ties directly into the taxes and other aspects as well. I want to thank everybody again for attending tonight, and also my fellow candidates for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan?
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and everyone who's attended tonight, as well as everybody here that's seated to my left and my right. My mother read to me when I was a child often, and it's a source of great pride for me, and in part, it's why I'm here, trying to become part of the school board. She used to read to me Khalil Gibran. And all I have to say is that regardless of position, or party, or problem, the quote that guides me on education is the following, "Knowledge and understanding are life's faithful companions who will never be untrue to you. For knowledge is your staff and understanding your crown, and when they're with you, you can possess no greater treasures." So I hope that you vote for change this election, for diverse viewpoints, and I think together we can really make a difference.
Thank you. Chris?
Really? I have to follow that? No, thank you all for attending. Thank you, UPG, League of Women Voters. I really didn't prepare a final statement. Thank you to the candidates, specifically the existing school board directors. I respect everything that you've done and what you continue to do, and thank you for being open and honest about what's going on in, in our school district today. Understand that the, the other candidates that are sitting here, hopefully, even if we win, lose, or draw, hopefully, we will hold you accountable, and you, as you hold yourselves accountable for our, our future, which is our children. So thank you very much, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I thank you for that, Chris. That was magnanimous of you. Thank you, UPG, League of Women Voters. We appreciate this opportunity to speak about our work and why we want to continue it. I have to specifically thank my wife, Rachel Ezekiel Fishbein, who's here tonight, for putting up with the amount of time that I spend on this work. It is a work of love. I have so appreciated the opportunity to serve this community, and I feel strongly that my voice has made an impact on the deliberations that go on in the boardroom and on administration, where I have an opportunity to influence how things are done, give guidance where appropriate, and I so very much want your vote to continue to be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Myron Goldman. I served on the school board back in '85 to '89, and I understand the difference between an informal direction and a formal one, which is passed by resolution. I have a, an action plan if I were to be elected, controlling costs, instruction and achievement, and there would be a resolution for this. I've already indicated I would expect specific results on the PSSA exam. School building management, a building has to be managed. Principles belong out in the classrooms and in the hallways. To make that happen, you pass a policy. Otherwise, it's voluntary. responsiveness to parents, again, you have to pass a policy, which then requires the teachers and administrators to respond in a timely way to parents. And my last thing, I would ask everybody, go online, look at this board's goals for the superintendent, and see if they are measurable or not.
Thank you. Julie?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and UPG. It's really helpful, and I also want to thank everyone who came out this evening. It's really helpful to be able to share why we do this work and why we'd like to continue to do this work. I know every day that I'm elected and not appointed, and that we have a duty and responsibility, which is an awesome duty and responsibility, to be really student-focused. So what I think I bring to the board is some experience, having been on the board for eight years, and for some might, some might say, way too long, and looking over at Ryan, who's shaking his head. But I say that length of time on the board does bring some knowledge, does bring some experience, does bring some information that I think is really helpful. What I'd like to leave you with is a poem by Benjamin Mays, which I do think about a lot. I have only just a minute. Oh, time's up.
Sorry. That was actually good timing.
You only have 10 seconds.
Only a second. Phyllis?
Yes, when I was very young, I was in New York teaching judo in a gym, and Joe Lewis was a friend of my teacher, and he came and asked me if I wanted to learn how to box. I didn't think to myself, what's a little white girl going to learn from this strong Afro-American man? I just got in the ring with my little gloves, and he taught me a lesson that has gotten me through life, which is never look away from your opponent. Thank you.
Thank you. Tyrone?
Well, since I'm last, and I know everyone's ready to go home, and this water's running through me, I'll be very quick. First, I say thank you to everyone for coming. Thank you for having this event. I hope to gain your vote. I am someone who has a master's degree in business, but I also dedicate my entire life to education. So we talk about some of these problems that we have, looking at finances, and the board's been doing a great job of trying to cap costs. I have that experience. I also have regular contact with the Department of Ed. They seek my counsel on policies a lot of times, so I understand what's happening. I am a lifelong resident who simply wants to help out and give back to my community, and I hope that you'll give me that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to give a huge round of applause to all the people at these tables, front to hand, answering all these questions and doing such a fantastic job. Can everybody in the audience give these guys a round of applause? Thank you all very much. Good luck in your race, and thank you for coming out tonight.